So it is six o'clock on January twenty seventh and I'm gonna call this joint work session of the Lacey City Council and the Plan Commission to order. We do have one amendment to the agenda. Our last agenda, I am, will be a quick discussion about our future city council meeting, times and places. Just get a quick update on that. With that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as amended?
Okay. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? See then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. We have an amended agenda. And so bulk of our agenda day is going to be our 2022 planning commission work program. I know Rick, you have, do you have an idea of how you want to go around and do staff or do introductions?
Well, I think if, if you wanna start the introduction, Mayor Ryder, with yourself and then maybe call up the council members and maybe Chair Lawson can introduce himself and call out the planning commission and then the staff, we can introduce ourselves.
It's always kind of difficult to see who's here on one screen, but I guess I'll get started. Mayor Andy Ryder, turn it over to the Deputy Mayor.
Malcolm Miller.
And then we have, we have Lenny, you want to introduce yourself?
You're on mute.
The.
Sorry about that. Lenny Greenstein, City Council.
And then Ed?
Ed Tuncle, City Council.
And then Carolyn?
Carolyn Cox, City Council and former Planning Commissioner.
And Mike?
Michael Stedman, former planning commissioner and City Council member.
And Robin?
Robin Vasquez, she/her and former planning commission member, City Council.
I'll turn it, I think that's everyone on my side. Dave, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Chair of the Planning Commission, Dave Wasson. You're up, Mark.
Mark Meininger, Planning Commission.
Daphne.
Daphne Metzloff, Planning Commission, sorry.
Gail?
Gail Madden, Vice Chair.
Karen, thank you. Karen?
Karen McMichael, Planning Commission.
Eddie?
Eddie Bishop, Planning Commission.
Did Paige come in?
Don't see her.
I don't see her. Okay, did I miss? I don't see anybody else on my screen. Okay, looks to you, Rick.
Scott?
Yeah, so Scott Spence, City Manager, and then we have Rick.
Rick Walker, Director of Community and Economic Development. And Ryan?
Ryan Andrews, Planning Manager.
And Grant.
Grant Beck, Planning and Development Services Manager.
Everyone?
I believe so.
Okay, now I'll turn it back over to you, Rick. Let's get into the work program.
Great, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and for our annual work programs. It's an opportunity for us to kind of connect a little bit between the planning commission and the council and talk about projects. And I do have a lengthy presentation. I'm gonna share my screen here. And if I can get that up to full screen. And there, can everybody see the the competency plan circle?
Yep.
So again, tonight's the night for the annual joint of, of meeting between the planning commission and the city council to talk about the upcoming work program for the planning commission. But I am gonna take a little bit of different tack this year than we have done in past years. Part of the theme for tonight is implementation. And this coming year, we see more of a year of implementation versus a lot of activity coming up through the, the, the planning commission. Part of the, this introductory slide is just to really cement that as we develop our competency plans and the various plans and elements, there's a lot of different interconnectives between other actions. So, you know, as you look at facility plans, your implementation programs, your development regulations and budget, they all work and coincide. And it's not just necessarily one department that helps support some of this competency plan work that brings forward to the planning commission and ultimately the council. There's multiple departments that are intertwined in this as well to deliver the, the information as well as a service to, to the, to the planning commission, council and the, and the general public. So again, tonight's gonna be more, we're gonna start with a little bit of looking back to some of the activity and accomplishments of, of last year, 2021. And then you wanna, looking forward, because there's been a lot of strong policy actions and decisions by, by the, or made recommendations by planning commission and decisions by the council over the last several years, we really wanna kind of talk about some of these implementation items that we kind of need to move forward as a department. And these are things that not necessarily would go to planning commission, but would be things implementing those past policy reviews and, and, and implementation ordinances and regulations. And then well, so we'll go through some of the department work level program and then we'll jump into the actual planning commission work program docket and, and present that and make our recommendation for moving forward with that work program for the planning commission 2022. So to begin with, I mentioned that we'd take a look back at 2021. And we really did have a very successful year as a, as a city and as an organization. In the, in the planning world, long plane range pine divisions, in 2021, we had several key actions that were taken by the council after review and recommendation by the planning commission. Those include adoption of the housing action plan. And part of that housing action plan was the second part of the subpart was the midtown market study of how we can promote the midtown area for additional residential development, which again, they're interconnected as a planning and efforts that goes back to the downtown two thousand vision established in nineteen ninety nine to try to create more residential capacity. So we're still working on those implementation measures. We also have the urban forest management plan. And this was a update to our existing forestry plan. This was, I guess stimulated by citizen addressing the council about the need for a review of the regulations related to HOAs. On one hand, there were some citizens that wanted to have stricter regulations on how HOAs can remove trees in an open space tract. And some would like to have some path to deal with nuisance trees. Through that consultation conversation, and we knew that we had the upcoming five-year cycle for updating their before she planned, we put that on the, the work program for the planning commission. And the council just recently adopted that update to that plan. Also, we have the implementation orders that goes with that that's still being worked on, and that will be coming back before council in February or March for further study on the implementation ordinance. Now, on the lower left, we have the Thurston climate mitigation plans, another key piece of policy adopted by the council and review of the planning commission. This is also a result of a lot of regional work and coordination over the last two years or plus. So at the end of the day, the, the council adopted the climate mitigation plan through that regional coordination work. I was created the regional climate committee, which we have council member representation on that committee. We also used that as a form to explore regionally coordinated actions for implementation, but also part of that climate action plan, the council adopted and identified priorities for local or Lacey initiative actions as well. And that's going to inform some of our work going forward in 2022. And then finally, as part of the housing action plan and our affordable housing strategies that, in the housing element that the councils adopted in past years, we did some implementation work in the housing field with the waiving of fees for low income projects related to all types of, of development applications, both nonprofit and private. We all, the council also extended the multifamily tax exemption program, and then also adopted the organs consolidating our low density zones into one zone to allow a mixture of, of housing types in all of our low density zones up to six units of the acre. And so there's some of the key actions that the council took based on the work the planning commission and long range planning staff have done and set the stage for some of our work coming forward in 2022. So next, I wanna take a look at back last year in permitting. And we've had a lot of permitting activity in the city as, as the, the council and planning commission are aware. There's been a lot of dedicated work by the city staff. And one thing too, when we look at permitting, again, as I talked about, there's a lot of multiple departments that work in it. We have our current planning program that primaries on the land use permits. We have our building division, but there's a lot of intersection with public works development review, and that's a key piece to the whole permitting system. So again, there's multiple departments working on this effort. So in the category of land use permits, what you're seeing here is a bar chart. And this is one of the more challenging type of activity it is to track, because with land use permits, it's very fluid to when you issue a permit, to when you actually receive that application and that workflow. So we tried to demonstrate the actual workflow of, of the permitting staff in these two color coded charts, one being red are the applications that we received in 2021 and yellow being those permits issued in 2021. So in traditional sense, we used to report that we issued twenty one site plan review permits. But really, the workflow has that additional eighteen that were submitted, because soon as they're submitted, all of a sudden that process is started. So as you can see in the administrative side, which is your site plan review, your, your things that don't require public hearing, commercial industrial site plans, multifamily projects, we issued thirty nine, or had thirty nine applications in process at one time or another during 2021. On the left-hand side, you see the category called hearings. Those are the applications that go forward to the hearing examiner, then makes recommendation to council. And we, and those are things like conditional use permits, well, and development permits and preliminary plat. And as you can see, we had a total of four of those type of applications come through. And then you have a little bit higher level review process, community engagement. So it's important to point out that even though there may be four, there's still a lot of work, because those are the ones that can create a lot of community involvement and comment and inquiries. And so again, it's a little bit exponential compared to some of our administrative permits. Over on the right-hand side, you can kind of see some of the other types of activities we had. So again, as we are very coordinated with our departments and work very well together as a team, we schedule every other week, project review teams and setting up for our pre subs and where the, the planning division and the public works and the building can get together and talk about projects and and, and standards. So we had about twenty four project review teams in 2021 that equated about four hundred and fifty hours for the year. And I want to point out that those are only community and economic development hours. Doesn't count public works development review as well. So that's an additional hour commitment. We also held sixty two pre submission conferences over the year. And again, the other thing too is business license. Again, that's a multi-department approach where you have finance department that receives a license, routes it out, police department, building official, public works and planning all review that to make sure that that license is something that is something to be allowed within the city or doesn't make any other standards. So there was two thousand and two total business license reviewed in, in 2021. As a side note, I just want to point out, that is a key point for us to interact with somebody, because sometimes somebody's proposing a business that may not be the right fit, or they may need more information. And so we try to reach out and try to get them to the right spot so they can be successful. And tree reviews, you can see there's two hundred and seventy two total tree reviews, which is quite a bit, eighteen zoning certifications. And then we also had four annexations that occurred that increased our city size by additional seven hundred and seventeen acres. Those, those foreign annexations also increased our population, unofficial at this point, because they won't be officially counted next year, but increased our population by about two thousand five hundred and seventy individuals. So in the building permit stage, this is kind of the more traditional way we kind of account for activity, because it's at the, it's a very finite point, and we can quantify a permit issued and, and of course, number of units. But one of the things I want to talk about here too is, again, the coordination and work that our organization does in terms of the city departments is once you get to that building permit stage, there's been a lot of work done prior to that. So if you think about it, if somebody comes in for a pre sub, then they have to go through the potential to land use process. Then they go through grading permit review, civil drawing review and public works, and then ultimately a building permit issuance. And, and so that process can be a lead time of twenty four months plus to work through those, those systems. So again, when we talk about the end state of that and now, there's been a lot of work that led up to it by, by our staff that again, it's their dedication to keep these things moving and, and coming forward. So when you're looking at these charts, on the left is the account of number of residential units that were permitted over the, since 2015. The red columns represent single family detach and the yellow portions of that are the multifamily units. And if you see as our, our city has developed and a lot of our single family, these zones lands or can accommodate single family subdivisions have been built out, you see that transition to multifamily fairly starkly in 2018 to a high water mark of eight hundred and ten multifamily permits issued in 2021. To date since 2015, it's a combined total of three thousand five hundred and eighty seven units that were, have been created, whether they're a single family or multifamily since that time period. And interesting enough, in context to population growth, since 2015, our population increase was six thousand nine hundred people on an, on an estimate. And that doesn't include the annexation number. So if you take the correlation, that's about one unit for every two people that has been created since 2015 in that additional population growth. Now, I don't know how that really compares in terms of norm, but we also know that we have a kind of a, a gap that was created in the two thousand eight recession that councils talked about classwork sessions for that catch up in the market supply, but there is a, a correlation that we can track going forward to see how we keep pace with population growth and unit count. Over on the right-hand side is our commercial and industrial permits. You see the top, we have the, the other type of permits that our building department administers through. But in terms of the commercial, industrial, the newer construction are in yellow and, and green respectively. And then most of our commercial permitting is through tenant improvements and alterations and amendments. So as you can see, there's been quite a bit of, of commercial industrial activity. One of the things that I want to point out with our expansion of our industrial area and we, over the last two years alone, have increased by about four million square feet of industrial. We've increased our employment opportunities in Lacey since 2015 by about three thousand two hundred jobs. That goes, goes to the total of, of total jobs generated by Lacey businesses in 2021 to total about just over twenty three thousand jobs in, in Lacey. So I thought that was a kind of a nice little stat to, to think about. Let's see. So now we'll go into economic development, what some of the activities we were working on in, in 2021 in, in that economic development field. So there's been a lot of different efforts. We try to get on the ground and support both recruitment, business retention, expansion and workforce development. Those are the, the kind of three goals that we have. And, and also entrepreneurism and reach out to small business and minority businesses to create opportunities for that business expansion and growth. So some of the programs we've been either maintained or kept or initiated in 2021 includes a, you know, the scale up two hundred series of business training program. This is a partnership with the Thurston Economic Development Council. Council, you may recall that in previous years, we, the city council has authorized the funding of scholarships for scale up. And scale up is that training series for new businesses and new business owners to kind of get their feet under them and learn about how they can develop better business practices. And it's a several part series. During the pandemic, the Department of Commerce, the state of Washington decided to fund all local scale up programs. And so that meant our, our scholarship wasn't necessary. So we worked with Thurston EDC to create the two hundred level series of training and launched that last year. So that was one program that we wanted to create. If those that went through the basic scale up and they're ready for that next level or other businesses that are kind of more in the, the upper level, they could join and get more coaching and support and training through that program. We also have everybody's role where we, the Lacey Makerspace, we did a lot of work to facilitate the the grant award from EDA for one point two million dollars to purchase it, cutting edge equipment. And one thing I want to point out or just think is all of our partners, Saint Martins University, the Thurston EDC, our lobbyist, Joe Rubin and his team, because they're the ones that identified that grant and helped support of that, as well as Wesley when in our economic development department, because there's a lot of effort and work and groundwork to work through the EDA process to, to bring that grant in. Also, we launched the, the interim food truck plaza, knowing that we would try and test the market and try to figure out, is this something that the community would accept? That was met with a lot of initial success, a lot of feedback in the community was how great that opportunity was, and they want more and more consistency. We ended up having a total combine of eight vendors that, that parked in the parking lot next to the fifty seven hundred building and the, the Rubik's Club Depot facility. At some points, we had four vendors in one day. Their average stay is about two hours. And each vendor, you know, the average revenue for each vendor was about two to three hundred and fifty dollars a day. And this was a good test of the market, because it gave us some insight, give us some understanding and kind of helped us start preparing for this coming year. And I'll talk a little bit more later, but really it's coming here when we try to relaunch that food truck plaza in coordination with the museum project. Again, we've talked about workforce and we had all that increase in job activity from the industrial expansion. We had two new employers come into the market, Snow Joes and Amazon. And we worked with both those companies, because as they come in, they start needing to ramp up really quick and get their initial hires. So they're trying to figure out how to enter the local job market and advertise. So we provided assistance to both those companies and connected and coordinated with Thurston Chamber workforce, Pack Mountain, to help recruit and facilitate those connections. And so that, that snow Joe, they ended up, needed to have a, an initial hiring of a hundred individuals. They were able to successfully do that. And Amazon needed to have that initial hire of about three hundred individuals and they were able to do that. And so they can get started, hit the ground running, once their buildings were complete and ready to be occupied. Again, some of that workforce training program, one of the value and assets of the Makerspace was we were able to host a construction boot camp put on by Pack Mountain with some federal dollars to help second chance and folks that had no construction experience to be able to go through a, a basic course to understand site construction practices so that they could have that step up and trying to get that first job on a construction site. And so we were able to help host that four-week class at the, at the Makerspace. And, and that's going to be a rotating class that moves around the five counties that serve by Pack Mountain and will virtually be back at the Makerspace in the near future. And the other thing too is with our experience with hiring in industrial markets, we found that our labor pool for warehousing is, is very high quality, but not very big. So we need, we're looking to increase that. And so it starts initial conversations with employers and local partners to figure out, is there an interest in developing the warehouse training and canopy? And so that's something we started the, the seed work this last year. And then finally, we developed the newsletter and dashboard. The newsletter is an economic news that goes out to our business community, providing them resources, information and best practices. And then our dashboard is a reporting system that we're now providing for the council and others to kind of show what the economic activity is from month to month. And then you see those nice rates down at the bottom. And, you know, we, you know, in twenty twenty one, we added a hundred and two new businesses, which is make, increases our total to just over fourteen hundred businesses in the Lacey community. So that's a quick snapshot of a look back in twenty twenty one and all the work that was either underway or, or accomplished. So now we'll look forward to in twenty twenty two. And again, that focus of implementation. So the, the whole context of this is again, to the kind of let everybody be aware of how we're moving forward on those past policy decisions that the council and the, and the planning commission has worked on. But one of the first things we did is, which is a crossover between the last two years, is continuing that culture of improvement. Because we want to make sure that, one, we're following as best practices as possible and we are making efficient and predictable processes. A quick background, we've had a same permit tracking system, you know, using that same permit tracking system that we onboarded in nineteen ninety nine. There's been a lot of technological advancement and changes over the years. And so it's time for us to upgrade to a new system to onboard that. So we started this process to create onboard a system called Track It, which would be an all electronic based permit tracking system, which will facilitate digital or paperless reviews and, and also provide opportunity for applicants to be able to have sign-ins into their application process so they can see status, and then also provide comments back and forth based on our reviews to the applicant, so they can make those corrections. Nice thing about that is it creates a concurrent review, because currently we're a paper process. So if, if there's multiple reviews of a project, that paper goes around to each person. And sometimes you lose time just in process there, where this is, everyone can go to the same spot, review things concurrently, also see each other's comments, so that we are providing conflicted feedback or we can work out those details before it gets to the, the applicant. The other nice key feature of this is the credit card payment system will be onboarding with that. And again, that's something we've heard from our development community is the need to be able to provide credit card service. And so this is something too that we will be, that will include as a part of this launch. And then of course, through this process, it helped us reassess our, our review process and improve some of the inefficiencies that we've developed over time. Again, this permit tracking system, it started in, I believe in the early twenty twenty, which is intended to be a twelve-month process. The pandemic hit, so this process is normally a face-to-face with the consultant or the vendor, went to a virtual process. It's taken some more time, but we're going to be able to set up for a schedule for a estimated launch at the first week of April. And we'll bring this back to the council and work session in March to give a full overview and, and demonstration of the system, so you have better awareness. But what, what I do want to just recognize as well is the work of Marcy Price. She has been our dedicated FTE employee, working and coordinating this effort. Also, Ryan and Grant have been instrumental in keeping this project moving forward. But again, I talked about about interconnected start apartments and how well we work together. This also affects all of our current planning and building side. They had to go in and test and provide feedback, take time out of their other schedules and activity to, to engage in this, to make sure we get the system correct as well as public works development review and their, and, and they're involved in the process, because it's got to be connected with their reviews and we're coordinated. And then finance department with, you know, working with us on credit cards and information services for hosting the server and figuring out how the tech works for us and communicating back and forth with vendors. So there's been a lot of team efforts. I just want to acknowledge that. And really appreciate everybody's work on this, because it does take out of their normal practices. Economic development focus for this coming year. Again, I talked about the, the food truck court. Again, we're looking at relaunching that, targeting the end of June, coordinating with the current depot demolition, or excuse me, the fifty seven hundred building demolition project. And as that comes to an end, we're looking to put additional amenities in there and establish the food truck board to have a more permanent setting and consistency. So we're, you know, in the planning stage of, of how to do that logistically. Makerspace, that's, again, a lot of focus is going to be on that for the next tier or steps of updating our rules and procedures for the executive committee. But also we need a plan for space expansion to accommodate that new equipment. And that's going to have a fundraising component. And so there's a lot of coordination with Saint Martins University. They're looking at trying to relocate the facilities so we can use of all Zavro Hall. And if that's the case, there's going to need to be some investment into Zavro Hall to make a conducive for the Makerspace operation. We'll be looking at private and public sources for those funds. And so we'll have some more of a briefing on that and an upcoming work session for the council. We're also going to continue focusing on workforce development, that warehouse academy idea. We got identified partners. We're going to set up conversations then about how we can facilitate a curriculum. It's going to be, those partners include our private employers out in the northeast area, the Washington Retail Association, because they see a need to make sure private employers out in the northeast area, the Washington Retail Association, uh, because they see a need to make sure that there's adequate employees in the distribution world to support the retail world. And so, as you know, we want to make sure there's there's adequate flow and source. Uh, also, the the Community College in Saint Martins will also be a part of that as well as a Thurston E D C. So we're going to be continuing to focus on trying to develop a program that we can launch in in some venue. Uh, the business retention and and expansion category, that is um, again, continuing the scale up to hundred. We're looking at developing a restaurant identification map so we can identify where restaurants are, what their needs are and create that list. Uh, it could be an interactive map as well. Um, and then also, something new that we're going to try to launch this year, it's going to come before council, uh, just went through the Finance and Economic uh, Committee. Uh, this last week, we're going to bring the council, next uh, council meeting is a proposal to work with Thurston E C to develop a uh, BIPOC and veteran focused business startup training series. Some are the scale up, but we have targeted outreach and and focus to try to connect um, entrepreneurs and business owners in our BIPOC communities to be able to have access to training and support as they look to launch businesses as well. Um, then city economic analysis, that's something that's preparing for our economic development plan, or excuse me, our economic uh, plan update. Coming up in uh, in the two years, but we're doing a a citywide economic analysis. Uh, the first one we did was in twenty fifteen, so this is the second series five years later, so we can see progress and changes over the last five years. And look forward to figuring out what we need to do strategically going forward. That project is just about to be completed and we'll be bringing that back to both the Planning Commission and and Council for briefing and presentation. And then um, Project Springboard, this is that, looking to develop that partnership with Saint Martins University to figure out how we can incubate business launches out of their um, collegiate programs. Uh, best example is replicating off planet research. And if you're familiar with off planet research, these are two grad students that figured out a way to crush rock, a certain type of granite from Canada into a dust that replicated moon, moon dust or moon soil to test equipment um, going up into space. And so they had this idea, they got started, needed a place off campus to be, so we worked out an arrangement where we rented them space at a graduated rate. They were able to build up their contracts, build up their business, get to the point where they then launched and uh, got in their own space and uh, as as to this point being successful. So that's the type of model we want to try to replicate using the assets and and uh, um, uh, talent that's right here next to us at Saint Martins Campus. And finally, it'd be like uh, Queen of Village. There on the list as something that we see it's coming, it's kind of a placeholder. Uh, this is the Hoxbury Business District, and at some point, the Nisko I try is going to bring that forward to have discussions on a master plan. And there's going to be a lot of work centered around that at the staff level, both in working out the master plan, whatever review process we need to uncheck, and then most importantly, the different types of inter- intergovernmental agreements that we're going to have to develop within the Squali Tribe. So those are things that'll be coming forward to uh, at some point in the year, we just don't know exactly when. All right, so we're almost there. Um, project, kind of a general description, but this is another piece that affects uh, the work of uh, both long range and current planning and all the the department. These are the projects too that are implementing a lot of the past uh, planning decisions. Um, as we know, most recently, the Thurston Client Mitigation Plan, the priority out of the gates for that is to start developing, you know, those priority prioritized implementation strategies that council identified, which include the Energy Audit and Efficiency Program. Um, the uh, recent uh, interlocal agreement that was approved for the study, the effects or impacts of switching to electric source uh, uh, energy for new development as well as um, you know, the the sequestration studies. So there's a lot of pieces there right off the gate that we're going to be working on to implement some of that recent decisions. Uh, part of that is, we're also going to have to find time to um, figure out how we have, you know, bring on a part time or a contract manager to help us with that process, but that'd be a part of the piece that we're looking to have uh, move forward this first quarter of this year. Over on the right, we have the Housing Action Plan and um, Strategies. So, you know, that's the other thing that's kind of added on to kind of the the city's uh, overall responsibilities is is housing and homeless. We've always set policies and such the stage through our uh, comp plan and then our development or or regulations to let the private sector and the nonprofit um, um, housing providers do most of the work. We are becoming more active, involved in housing. Uh, from working on developing a homeless response plan, that's the plan that we're working with the homeless. Uh, the community-based homeless work group. That process is just about coming to an end, so we'll be coming back to council in February to uh, highlight that and have a meeting with the between the council and members of the work group. Uh, but that's something that's that's going to be going forward, and it's also going to require implementation out of that as well. Uh, the A D U program outreach, this is another piece where we launched that right at the beginning of the pandemic, we had a lot of support, but as a pandemic hit, we kind of lost some of that momentum. So we're looking at uh, designing an outreach effort or campaign to get that message out again and uh, relaunch that program. Uh, again, coordination of the Regional Housing Council, there's a lot of things on our, that we do with regional coordination. Um, you know, looking at using our funds, it's been talked about using it for a hotel acquisition or other ways to develop permanent supportive housing. Um, we also have um, working with the regional level, trying to develop a regional, a plan to develop uh, permanent sort of housing over the next three years to help build up that infrastructure. So as we deal with homeless on the streets, get them the services, there's ultimately a place for them to go. Uh, that's kind of the biggest lack in the system right now is that that background infrastructure for shelter and housing. And then, of course, the homeless response coordination, that's something again, affects all departments. You have the Police Department, the C R U team, the law uh, mock team, you also have Public Works uh, Rapid Response Team, you have the work out of the City Manager's Office and Public Affairs. And then also you have that coordination between other govern- uh, other jurisdictions and at the regional level. So a lot of that coordination part comes into ours to help connect and and make sure we're trying to deal with consistent information and uh, maintain our response. Uh, kind of like theme of regional planning, I talked about the climate action implementation at the regional level, the guy who continued to participate in that. Uh, that's the sequestration studies, um, the electrification studies and other actions that'd be defined by the Regional uh, Climate Committee. We also have underway the Martin Way Quarter Study, that's a regional project that uh, um, is being uh, worked on and and uh, that's looking at the whole Martin Way Quarter from Olympia uh, County to East Martin Way and Lacy. And then, of course, I mentioned the regional housing efforts. Another big thing that's going on at the at the staff level, it's affecting all departments, but uh, we're facilitating the con- uh, the process is the capital facilities plan, and that's going to be a a a a large effort, because in this facility's plan, it's really going to focus on uh, general government service buildings or facilities. Uh, our water utilities or our sewer utility, all our utility plants have really good, robust facility plants that just jump into our our conference, uh, our capital facilities plan. But we really need to take a look at, as we have been growing as a community and our future grows, what other general services do we need in terms of expansion at Space City Hall or uh, by uh, services that are more general to the community. So that's something that's kicking off, and again, it it's going to affect all departments, because all departments are going to have to participate in that and ultimately uh, uh, figure out a strategy so we can have some predictability of what facility needs are. And another piece of that, of course, is is the uh, uh, you know, talking about like the public works maintenance shop and what it looks like, what needs will be in five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Then, of course, the pedestrian bike plan and uh, whoops. Um, the depot district survey plan, these are plans that have been adopted for three to four years ago or two or three years ago. And we need to get back to looking at those and making sure that we're on pace and implementing those as well. So we got to review those plans and figure out how are we implementing them, and so that the those divisions and standards that were established in them are not uh, getting dusty. So those are things that we're going to try to layer on as we go throughout the year. All right, so now, let's see. Uh-oh, what are you? It's a new system that we're using, so I'm like, you don't have my driver's license yet.
Is this prezi?
It is prezi.
Yeah.
All right, so now we're going to get into, you know, the 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 key piece for action tonight, which is the program for um, the planning commission in in twenty twenty two. And I forgot to mention before, but you know, I'm I'm kind of taking a broader level to this, and as we get into question and answer, we have Ryan Ryan here to kind of fill in a lot of the details. Uh, but as we get into the program for twenty twenty two, and this is what's the staff report in your packets and the associated attachment of the spreadsheet and application materials relate to. Um, so ultimately tonight, we would like to have, after discussion and questions, council take action to adopt the twenty twenty two work program. And of course, with all that other work that we have going on, we're really focusing this year's work program on those things that we need to do because of their timelines associated with it, there's mandates, or there's something that we can pick up that that actually furthers two objectives, uh, or through two or three objectives versus a single, single objective. So on the city initiated amendments this year, we have a several that are on update cycles. So we have the stormwater manual update. And last year, the stormwater plan was updated, so this is now the manual to implement the stormwater plan. So we need to update this to be in compliance with our uh, M P D S phase two municipal permit. So that's something to be going forward this year. I think the timeline um, timeline will be uh, um, need to be accomplished by June, if I remember correctly. We also have the water system plan update. Uh, this is a periodic five year plan, and that is something too that's going to need to move forward. We're working with uh, Public Works on both the stormwater and water system plan. Uh, I mentioned the capital facilities plan, again, this is a deep dive in our facilities. It's not a lot of work at the planning commission level, however, the planning commission is going to need to help hold and facilitate the public hearing and hopefully give that final review of it. So there'll be a couple of briefings and then the public hearing before it goes on to council. I mentioned the Martin Way Quarter Study, again, that's just coming out of that regional process. At some point this year, it's going to need to hit um, our process for uh, endorsement and adoption. There's also going to need to be an outreach piece to that as well. Uh, we have the parks plan update, which I know pieces of that the council planning are well aware of. It's on a six year cycle due in twenty twenty three, but with the amount of updates, a complete update that we need to start work now to facilitate that. So we're working with uh, Jen in the Parks Department for that process. And of course, it's going to incorporate a lot of the work that's being done um, with the various uh, you know, like the Kula Park and other park projects. Uh, Low Density Residential, that's a little bit of a low hanging fruit. It's going to actually update the official map to correspond with the action that the council just recently took on the Low Density Consolidation Ordinance. Whoops, sorry. And then um, down at the bottom, we have a a couple of items like the parking standards. Um, this is the planning commission already made recommendation to amend the parking standards for multifamily developments and electric vehicle charging stations. Uh, Land Use Committee has our council committee has already been briefed on it, so it's going to be going to council for for action. So that's why we have that little check mark on us, we already accomplishing something in twenty twenty two. And then um, we have the emergency housing standards. This is the temporary encampment ordinance that the planning commission worked on about two years ago. We put it on hold until the end of the homeless work group uh, process. But now that that's coming to complete, we'll put a placeholder here. I don't know if there's going to need to be any revisions or uh, discussion to that orders that was previously recommended, but we have a placeholder holder here in case we need to take it back to um, the planning commission for review. And then finally, it was not on here, but we just got word this week. Uh, Thurston County has indicated to us that they're ready to take up joint planning for our um, of our twenty sixteen conferencing plan for the portions in the unincorporated growth area. And so we are going to have some uh, initial staff to staff coordination of what that looks like and a program schedule, and depending on what those, that workload is, it's going to be a lot of staff coordination going to county planning commission. But then eventually, it could be coming back to the planning commission and council for for endorsement. So that's the public portion, those are all things that are, you know, we do need to do accomplish this year. So in terms of private applications and part of our docking process, we uh, we received three applications uh, this year. Uh, one, we are recommending to include in the work program, and two, that we are not. So first, the one uh, that we look at recommending and improve uh, including into the uh, uh, this year's work program is a application requesting a uh, conferencing plan amendment. And submitted by uh, company called Olympia Hangers L L C. And their request is to um, redesign a partial zone, low density, I believe, um, uh, three to six to moderate density red, or yeah, moderate density residential. Uh, as you can see on the map book, you can see the parcel uh, with the red outline, they will subject property, it's just to the east of Carpenter Road. And um, where this is located is between um, uh, Martin Way and basically Lake Lewis. If this O S I designation, if you're familiar with the city uh, city uh, um, property that uh, public works property a location, that's that uh, O S I designation, and then this is the um, um, Malibu Drive neighborhood. So this uh, there's an aerial view of it. So this request is a request basically by the owners of the property to the north, who's currently developing Serenity Apartments. This is the product is under construction, multifamily mixed with some work uh, force or uh, work live type uh, how uh, unit construction. So as this, as they also own the this piece to the south, they're looking to continue the same type of development onto that property, which is why they're requesting the higher density zone. Also, this particular property does not have direct frontage on Martin Way, there's an intervening ownership owned by a the uh, Aldea neighborhood. And so access to the subject property will be from the property to the north, and so it would be a a connected parcel. So that was one application that I submitted for we, request for review. As a staff, we looked at this, it's something that's pretty partial specific. It's um, uh, fairly straightforward, there's going to be a little bit of a outreach and public process, but we think it's something we can fold into the the planning commission work program uh, moving forward in twenty twenty two.
Rick, isn't that piece of property have like a huge gully in it? I mean, there's not a lot of billable lands in there, is there?
No, this particular property doesn't have that. It it's a, it's a, um,
Where's the Aldia Glen neighborhood?
Aldia Glen is just to the south, right in this area.
And doesn't the city of Lacy own like a weird strip in there as well?
I have to go back and look, I'm not sure. And and Ryan, do you know if there's a ownership by Lacy in this area?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is it that green on the map above? On the color coded map?
All up in here?
Yeah.
Reason, reason why I say is because my my son app owns a a parcel in Aldia Glen. And on the other side, there's a big ravine in there.
So I think that ravine, mirror rider, is this location here, this is a uh, open space tract owned by Aldia Glen. That's further south of the property. So this, this property had an old log uh, building or house on it that they, I think relocated. So that's a different property than in this particular, is the Aldia Glen track. So being that fairly straightforward, it's something I mean, do believe that the commit fold into the process for this coming year. The other two um, requests relate to uh, one is um, requesting it to open up and and update the urban forest management plan. This is the urban forest manager plan that the council just adopted a couple of months ago. Uh, the request is submitted by Thurston Climate Action Team. And their uh, request is based on the recently updated uh, what we just did, the work with the last eighteen months in the uh, urban forest manager plan. Um, may may not reflect the goals and policies of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And so looking at this request and knowing the work that we just did on both the urban forestry plant and the um, uh, climate action plan, we don't believe that uh, this particular topic is ripe yet. And the other part of it is the concern about the Lacy's tree canopy and losing ground on that with some of the uh, the, you know, opportunities to set aside trees or remove trees, different different permitting processes. But it really relates back to the sequestration topic. And one of the reasons why we don't think this is ripe yet is because at the regional level, we're funded a study to take a look at sequestration county wide and take a look at all the various tree policies from in all the jurisdictions, Olympia, Tomahawk, Lacy, as well as the county. And how do you best focus um, sequestration on a regional basis? And what's the role of the rural area? And what's the role of the rural areas versus the urban areas? And how do you balance the need for concentration of growth and services and balance that need for sequestration? Um, and tree canopy. So again, we want to wait for that study is complete. That was part of the phase three work of the regional process. Yeah, I believe that study is going to be, uh, the draft is going to be issued in the next month or two. And once we start seeing that and having that regional conversation, we can figure out how the urban areas aligned with the overall goals for sequestration. So I recommend not to include this now until we have more information and we can fold it in at a, at a future time where it's more relevant.
Rick, can you stop sharing your screen real quick?
Yes. If I can find where that.
Councilmember Vasquez, did you, you have a question about this?
I mean, I think I reviewed the staff's recommendation on this and my only thought was in general, I don't like to postpone climate action. I feel like there's a sense of urgency built into it for me. But if we're expecting the regional report to be available in February or March, can't we put this on the work plan for the planning commission? For later on in the year, once that report is available. I'd rather do that than have to revisit it next year. I'd like it to be on the list, even if we put it a little further out.
And so I guess the question is, is once the white paper is done, then we have a better idea about sequestration. If that's not, if that's an odds with our urban forestry plan, shouldn't we address that sooner than later, Rick?
In theory, yes, but we don't know, we don't have enough description of what is the concern with the current urban forestry plan in relationship to sequesters. There wasn't a lot of detail in, in that application. Also, the study is going to inform us how, how jurisdictions should approach. It's also going to take assessment of each of the, the city's tree, uh, uh, protection and plant, uh, urban forestry plans to figure out whether consistent or maybe disconnects. So there's a lot of information to go before we even know we need to open up a document that had just gone through eight months, eighteen months of review and adopted two, two or three months ago. That was also reviewed concurrently with the development of the climate action plan.
I guess the question is, is once they go through the white paper, if there's shown some major inconsistencies with our forestry plan, at what point are you going to address that?
Well, that's where we would bring it back to the council and, and you can, you know, identify that and bring it on. And what were suggestions, putting this in the parking lot? And I think Grant has a point to make as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. Uh, clarify that the white paper is not the study. The white paper is kind of the technical background about what the study has to do. The, the study will actually be doing, done this year and won't be ready until towards the end of the year. So that's part of the twenty twenty two work program for the climate action committee. So I think it's just a, you know, the, the technical papers just sets the stage for what we really, the heavy lifting in the study itself. So I don't think we'll be ready by February for the updates.
But then I guess, I guess what our recommendation would be is once, once that information becomes available, we should take that information and make sure our plan is consistent. So I as, I don't know, you know, is, is that fair?
Well, yeah, and that's one of the things too, is, as staff, as we're working on these, these, these projects and having these conversations and we're engaged at that regional level, we're going to be informing and tracking this. And when we do identify those consistencies, we're going to figure out how to program that in. Um, also, you know, again, we might not see that there are any inconsistencies. So that's, that's the dilemma we're in. It's, it's too soon. That's why I say it's not right. Uh, Councilman Stedman, you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Rick. Hey, um, in regards to four, five, six Carpenter, uh, road southeast. Uh, sorry, it's feeding time for the cat ring now, so. The rezoning to medium density, has there been any, um, reaction or input from the neighboring, uh, the neighbors to the south? You know, I know when, uh, well, I, I, I just figured that they'd be concerned maybe with the multi housing. So that's why I ask.
There, there hasn't yet because this is very, very early in the process. This is the first step to see if it's even, uh, should be considered. When it's going on the docket, then we will start with, um, outreach. We'd have the, you know, potentially open house or, or some type of, uh, um, informational session and then also the public hearing. So there'll be opportunities for those adjacent property owners to be engaged and, uh, and know about the project and provide feedback.
It would've been nice if we just changed the zoning to the north. It would've been nice if they would come to us at the same time and, and change, if they're interested, changing it at the same time. I don't, I don't know what happened, how that, why that was missed, but we could have done it at the same time and we didn't have to go through another process and then a year later.
Well, no, this is a comp plan amendment, so it has to go on an annual comp plan cycle. So that's why we're having to look at it to bring it forward in this year's cycle.
Okay, right. But we didn't just change the zoning right, right to the north?
Right?
We, we did an annexation.
We did an annexation and did, but the zoning stayed the same?
Correct.
Okay, okay. We did the annexation, but it was already zoned that way. And this is the zoning just to the south of that, that would now needs to be changed if multiple families can go there.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilman Stedman, I think has another question.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, no, that's it. And I, I figured that's where we're at the pro, in the process, but I figured if people are watching, just clarify, let them know that the, you know, it's, we're in the infant stage, stages of the process.
So Robin, are you, oh, are you okay with the the plan going forward then?
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me that the white paper is not quite the same as the full study. And that we need the study before we can really reconcile what we currently have in our urban forestry plan with the regional expectations on sequestration for the county. I just don't want it to be indefinitely pending. I'd like it to be sort of, once we have the results of the study, that kind of triggers us to start taking a look at it.
Yeah, that, that's a, I mean, I don't want, yeah, I don't want to imply that it's going to be kicked off until five years later when we're required to update the forestry plan. We just needed more information, know what that work's going to look like. And, you know, if it's an easy, if there's an easy fix, no fix, or if it's substantial, we can program that into workflow.
Yeah, I know we have one more agenda item about the, the, um, green, the.
Well, the other dot application is the Mountain Greens, um, mobile home park residents had submitted a request to consider creating a mobile, um, home park zoning classification uh, to prevent or, or preserve existing mobile home parks and protect them from uh, redevelopment conversion. And this is an important topic as well. Uh, it's a, uh, topic that, uh, you know, as we all know, we have a lot of, uh, challenges in our housing market, especially in affordability. Uh, manufactured homes are a key type of, uh, housing type, not only in variety and type, but also in affordability, especially for those on fixed income. So this is an important topic. The, the challenge with it right now is we're just trying to figure out how it aligns with all the other actions in the housing action plan, which identifies this as a topic to be considered. But if we, uh, look at trying to do it in concert with the housing action plan and some of those strategies, we'll be able to potentially knock off a couple of, uh, different objectives at the same time. The challenge of moving forward now is this request is, it's going to be a, a, a long process. It's going to be, have heavy, um, um, staff time to start developing research. Also engagement, before we even get to public engagement, we still have to engage with, um, uh, manufactured home park residents, ownerships, develop a conversation. And so again, it's, it's something with everything else we have going on. I don't know if we could be able to accommodate bringing this on now, but we look at bringing it on uh, in a, you know, put it in the parking lot so we can bring it on in the future year where we can do a more coordinated action with the housing action plan.
Good. So the, my other question is that we have the Martin Way corridor study. We already talked about, uh, Thurston County finally wanting to update and get us closer alignment. We've, we've had conversations with Thurston County specifically about the Martin Way corridor. About taking over the permitting process along that Martin Way corridor. That's going to require an interlocal agreement, obviously, um, between Lacey and Thurston County and some coordination to get to that point. I don't see that on the work program at all. And it's, yeah, it's one of the most important things I've, I've seen come across in a long, long time when we're talking about working together with Thurston County to get them closer to, on our page when it comes to development, especially on the most important corridor that's not in Lacey, but everyone thinks it's in Lacey. And this could go a long ways to getting that more of a, in alignment with Lacy's as very soon. But I don't see it on the work program anywhere. So can you tell me where we're at in that process?
Yes, I sure can. I've had some initial conversations with my county counterparts, um, several months ago. But it is embedded in the, um, embedded in the work program under the Martin Way corridor project. That's one of the key aspects of the Martin Way corridor project is to get consistency design and standards along that corridor. That's actually been a conversation at that table. Um, as, as the, the staff representatives been working on, uh, not only the, the nodes that maybe develop opportunity sites, but also, um, the topic of, you know, even annexation or, or coordinated permitting and those types of things have come up. But the first step is, is to get the standards consistent. And the best bet is, is if the county is invested in that process, they know the standards, then they're maybe, they'll be able to implement those standards versus what we have today. So we're looking at that process to play out, which is going to play out this year. And the, um, as those, uh, as, as that gets adopted, we can have that conversation. Now we have consistent standards. How is the best permitting process, uh, that can be incorporated? And who amends that process that's most efficient for that landlord, but more as important, most efficient for each organization?
Yeah.
But you get into challenges with, with, if you have currently inconsistent standards, they're not up to date and consistent, or they're different applications, and you have different elected bodies involved. Who has jurisdictional authority? And if you contract that out, you still have it, it's a complication. So we're hoping the Martin Way corridor project recommendation will alleviate that with a consistent standard we can all agree on.
Okay. The, the permitting process is just as important though, because if they ask, uh, uh, you have to go to two steps of permitting process with a county and with a city, it just delays the process, makes it, you know, um, a whole unknown in there. And, and that's not good. That's why it's important that there's one permitting agency, what we've talked about, and that should be Lacey, especially on this corridor.
The, just to clarify, there is one permitting agency, that's Thurston County. And just like when we work with, uh, permitting that have other utility providers, we are a utility provider in that area. So the correlation is looking at the sewer and water and those systems that we're providing service to in coordination with the county permitting process. So there isn't two, it, it's, we're making sure, just like if it was PSC or anybody else we work with, is coordinated with that, uh, that overarching permitting process by the county.
I, yeah, I don't. But in practice, it, it's two, because it has to go through the county process and has to go to the city process and takes reference why that area is not looked at to redevelop because the, the development community says I'm not going to go through two different processes. You know that, but that's all right. I mean, I, I just think we need to figure that part out sooner than later because it's a very important corridor, not only for Lacey, but for the entire region. And we need to be able to streamline that a lot better. And so I just, I hope that's not forgotten in all this.
No, it's, it's not. It, it's, it's on the, you know, the list. But again, it's, it's waiting for this corridor project to get completed. And we are talking about it at, um, my counterpart as well.
So where we.
I think, uh, uh, Councilmember Vasquez has a.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
I'll keep it real short. So we don't currently have zoning language in our rules for mobile homes. Is that one of the gaps that we have for that project work?
I'm, I'm sorry, my, my audio cut out. What, what, uh?
Do we have rules around zoning for mobile home parks currently, like a, a specific type of zoning for mobile home parks?
Uh, no, we do not. Um, currently, a mobile home park can be established by a conditional use permit. Well, basically, can you, can you, can initially, uh, excuse me, conditional use permit process? We have a mobile home park, uh, ordinance that specifies how that is established. Um, if somebody looked at redeveloping a, uh, or converting a manufactured home park, there are, um, steps on the state level, which I don't think are necessarily, um, adequate because there's supposed to be relocation assistance and those type of things. And also you have kind of your underlying reviews in terms of CIPA and those type of things too, that can play into how does it impact those existing residents. Um, the challenge with a, um, a zoning classification, any change of that course would be, uh, have to go through a much larger process. And, um, also part of that process and trying to figure out what is the best approach is you gotta do a lot of inventory of all the various parks within the, in the community, both in the Lacey and urban growth area. Because every park's not the same. Um, and how do you sort through what should be potentially redeveloped because it's maybe, you know, not good living conditions? And what is good, which needs to be preserved? So there's a lot of legwork that needs to go into figuring out what the best path, path forward is.
Establishing standards, but it sounded like Thurston, um, like Tomwater and Olympia already had.
Tomwater. I, I should lose track of time, probably about, I want to say maybe ten years ago or so, this issue came up and, uh, uh, Tomwater adopted a zoning classification, doesn't need all their existing manufactured homes as a zone. Where we approached it was we, um, created a condominium process and finding site plan process and a, uh, a mechanism for the residents to be able to either have an opportunity to acquire or do something. But we didn't go as far as creating a zoning classification back then.
So what's before us is a recommendation to, um, accept those items that will require a planning commission recommendation, which will be, which will comprise the twenty twenty two planning commission work program. Is there, can I get a motion to approve? And I will make that motion that we accept those items that will require a planning commission recommendations, which will comprise the twenty twenty two planning commission work program. Is there a second?
I can.
Moved and seconded. There any discussion? Rick, you got something?
I just thought, I thought planning commissioner, uh, Mark, Mark Njeruk might have had his hand up.
Mark, you got some?
No, I was just trying to unmute myself and second it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Do you want to specify that that motion includes the Olympia Hangers LLC docketting application?
I think that is, uh, included in the, in the motion. Is there any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded. I'll impair the motion. See if I'm saying aye. Bye. Is there anyone opposed? And that motion managed to be carries. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you all. And hopefully I didn't, uh, talk too long and put you all asleep, so.
There's a, a lot going on as always. And I, I, I guess the ongoing discussion that we need to have as a, as a council, as a planning commission is, does the community and economic development, do they have the staff necessary to fulfill their, their needs, right? And that's a, it's an ongoing concern because there's so much going on right now with the growth of the city of Lacey that we've seen with, through annexations and other natural growth, the ongoing work programs. You know, I, I don't want to be in a situation where we're, we're not able to do some of this stuff because we don't have the workforce available. And so I guess this kind of goes back to Scott. I mean, you know, where, where are we at on making sure that we're at a hundred percent? We're up to a hundred percent capacity on, on our workforce because there's so much going on right now in Lacey. And if we're, if, if we're, don't have the workforce to do it, it just, you know, it affects everything that we do.
Oh, you're absolutely right. And so that's an ongoing discussion I've had with, uh, executive team. And there are pressure points. We've talked, you know, individually with council members about where we need to add more resources. So, um, we'll be bringing stuff to the finance committee as some potential additions. But also I just have a larger conversation about what the priorities of the city council are as it fits into your work plan. But also I just have a larger conversation about what the priorities of the city council are, as it fits into your work plan. And quite frankly, we're dealing with a couple of things. Right now, we're dealing with um, retirements and people, you know, going to different jobs. We're dealing with COVID. So there's a number of things, even though we have, I think we've talked about this before, we have about twenty-eight positions that we're currently recruiting for. So it's about ten percent of our equivalent workforce. So. We are feeling that pressure of not having those positions that we've already budgeted for, but we also have to be mindful too about how do we sustain that workforce. And also pay for it with our our funding system. So we'll be having more discussions about that at the finance committee level as well as the council level.
Yeah, I I just think it's really important that we understand all the pressures that are happening. From the the workforce side, from the what we're putting on and, you know, everything that's going on. So we know where the bottleneck's at, so we can address it, you know, and I I know this council is very supportive of making sure. The city can do its job, which is provide services to our our community. Um, and so we need to make sure we're staying up on that. And I, and I know that labor is expensive. But we're at a point now that I I, it's really important that we can keep up with that. Because if we can't provide the services to the people, then then it really affects everything we do as a city. So. Um, I, hopefully we can see that plan. I I also think it's important that, you know, we can talk about this at maybe at future retreats and see all these different. Things going on right now and and be able to look at our priorities and 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 make sure we can address that. Now, the other thing is, is we, we have a, you know, a significant amount of reserves that that needs to be looked at. Uh, we have a, a community economic development funds that we have had for a long time that needs to be implemented. And I don't want the fact that we don't have staff to be able to implement these things to be what's holding us back. So maybe it's it's a good discussion at early on retreat. I know we still talk about retreat. But um, it's it's something that's rare, very important. I I just don't want it to be missed.
Appreciate the support.
Um, so next up on our agenda is.
Mayor Ryder, I'm, I apologize, but I neglected to, you know, thank and recognize. Uh, Ryan and Grant for helping put all this presentation and materials together, and also all the work Ryan has done last year with all those. Um, um, lot of planning projects that came through in twenty twenty-two. So I just want to recognize. That I didn't have a lot of question, I didn't get a chance to get into the details, but I just wanted to recognize their great work and 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 help.
Um, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Grant. You guys are awesome. We know you guys are awesome. So we appreciate all you do for us. Okay, uh, next up is the Together Host Homes Program.
So this is a really brief discussion. So you may recall Together gave a presentation to city council about the Host Homes Pilot Program. I think the consensus from council that you were very supportive of doing this type of program, maybe as a very high level summary. I could do a quick uh, PowerPoint presentation that they provided last time we talked about this, so that would help the council, maybe the public looking at this again. Or I could just.
Just real quick, I know we just discussed this, but I guess.
Well, then maybe just, generally, this is very similar to the senior services program that we talked about, is basically finding. Homes for, in this case, for um, unaccompanied youth that are going through the school system. And so the idea for Together is to find host families that can provide a stable home environment. And then obviously, it's unfortunately that we are facing um, basically homeless in our youth, but. For the twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two calendar year, there's about two hundred and sixteen unaccompanied youth. And those, those individuals need stable home environments. And this is a larger context of our conversation about homelessness. And we think about some of our most vulnerable populations, homeless youth are in that category, and then how do we best assist them? And so Together has formed this idea again about finding host homes. And then also helping those unaccompanied youth to find a stable home environment with support services and case management. Their direct request to city council is a hundred thousand dollars for a single year to help with this program. They've also got seventy-five thousand dollars from North Thurston Education Foundation, and they're also looking for other funding partners.
So are you um, wanting to take action on this right now, or are you just, this is just an update, you're gonna have it come before our next council meeting?
Well, that, I believe council want to discuss this and do a final action. I know Councilman Greenson has his hand up.
Uh, Lenny?
Maybe I'm missing something. I thought we took action on this. I thought we already approved this at the last meeting. I know that across the board, everyone was fully supportive. I thought we already voted on it.
So my recollection of that discussion was, you're right, everyone was very supportive of it, and it was recommended to go to another meeting for final action.
Oh, okay.
Well, my my recommendation, Scott, is just put this on um, our next uh, city council meeting. And you can you put it under uh, at this point, um, probably put it under consent agenda, although. I guess you can do it under the city manager's report real quick, just so we can, you know, talk about it, but I I agree. Is there, is there anyone, any of our council opposed to this?
So how about I offer a different.
Is it time sensitive?
Could we vote on this now?
We, I was just gonna say, what if, if everyone is consensus that this is what you want to do, invest a hundred thousand? Just basically do a motion and a second and a vote, and then I will go ahead and put together and work with together with a contract for this program.
And then that.
I'll make a motion then. I move to approve a hundred thousand dollars um. To Together for the program for housing unhe- unhomed youth.
Moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Will this come back before the council, at at council meeting at some point, or are you just gonna do this?
Yeah, it doesn't need to. We obviously will provide updates on how the programs are going, just like we would with the senior center, our senior services program.
I was just gonna say, I mean, as I recall from the conversation, this is one of the best programs I've heard about in forever, as far as something that. Is actually showing really positive results. You know, the examples they gave of other places that are doing it. I forget what city it was, but they were having a hundred percent success of kids going through this program and finishing. Staying in and finishing high school. I mean, that's, this is a no brainer.
Deputy Mayor?
Uh, Scott, I remember uh, when we did our budget review, uh, I remember asking if this thing was ready. Uh, and at that time, he said, hey, they're they're just not ready yet, uh, and that we would revisit this um, early in the year. So. Uh, I'm glad to see it, and I'm glad that we've moved on it, uh, you, you know, and taken some action. So thank you for, for bringing that back.
That's a good question. Will this need, will this will need to be a budget amendment, or is it budgeted?
So as you know, we have about one point two million in our social services budget. We can accommodate this request. If there's other future requests that you believe are priority. We need amendment on that, but not on this specific request.
If I should. Okay, well, it looks like we're good to go. Is there any other discussion? Seeing all in favor of the motion, sign if I by saying aye. Carries go forth, Scott. So um, before we actually go on to this next agenda, I just want to give the chance for the planning commission. To engage with the city council on anything you think we need to be discussing, that we look at. You know, obviously, you guys are tasked all the time with doing our work, um, looking at things. Is it, is there, and through that work, sometimes you, you know, may discuss things that like, hey, boy, the council really needs to look at. X, Y, or Z. I just, I just, you know, we, we only meet a couple of times a year. I just wanted to turn it back over to the planning commission. Turn it over to Dave, and, you know, is there anything um, open discussion that you think we need to be? Be talking about between the city council and the planning commission? Dave, I'll let you.
Okay, planning commissioners, uh, speak up. Now's your opportunity. Hey, Gavin.
Yes, I have a co- just a comment. Um, I want to be sure and keep counting the trees. We had a tree committee, uh, and talked about the canopy, and we did a great job, I think, and. I tried to satisfy the um, Thurston planning uh, group around that. Uh, they were somewhat satisfied, but of course, coming back to us. Um, there's a new piece parcel near Aldia Glen, lots of trees on it. So I don't want to forget about Lacy's reputation as being the tree city. So, just a reminder, there was also a, a conversation going on about. An arborist and putting them on less as a consultant and more as permanent employee, because the. The workload is increasing, and we've got HOAs coming along and slicing all the trees down, and. We want to be sure and keep an eye on that. We might need to have a dedicated staff person do it.
Thank you. Um, that does remind us that there, there was a recommendation at some point that we have. Our own committee on on this, and we just didn't have staff or whatever. I mean, I I do think that it should. Remain a priority for the city, having a, a um, and. On their, their own committee on on this. Where, where are we at on any of that? And when do you, when do you think? That maybe be back before us?
So I think that'd be a, again, you just mentioned earlier, Mayor, about talking about what are the pressure points in the organization, and what kind of services we're not able to achieve, given our. Um, workforce. I think that'd be a, a topic of discussion to give you an updated information on that.
Well, then, what I'd request is that be included, say, in our, our council retreat on. All the different pressure points and where we're at, and what needs to be addressed, so we can start prioritizing some of these, some of these. And so, because I I do think this should be a priority for our city, um, but we need to figure out what it'll take to get there. Um, to make it reality. Is there anyone else, planning commission?
Go ahead, Gail, unmute yourself.
I, I just wanted to um, speak up for the planning staff. I think they do a remarkable amount of work and um, do it very well. But this year, you lost a planner, and um. I, I, my sense is that they're right on the edge of. Um, not being able to accomplish the plan because unexpected absences occur. So I think they need. More cushion than they have in the past to make sure the work gets out on time and and um, is thoroughly done. I, I, I really am amazed at the amount of work and and detail that they put out, and a- as you heard. Rick's presentation, there is a lot of stuff, and you know, another ten thousand people in the city impacts what they have to do. I think um. I would encourage you to give really strong um, thought about um, staffing up the planning and economic development staff.
I would, would agree with that a hundred percent. I think uh, we all feel it, that the community economic department does so much for our city. And I know, I know all our departments are hurting right now. Uh, that's, I know the police need more police officers. I need. Public Works needs no more people. I, and I agree with all of that, um, and we need to look at that as well. But this department is so. Paces the public so often, and it's a, they provide so much service to the public, not only the public, but to to us as well. Um, that I, I do think it's, it's really important that we're not just at break even level, that we, we have some capacity. In there, Scott. And so I I I hope that is looked at, and you know, this, our council's always been supportive. Of any request you've ever, you've had to bring on the necessary, you know, requirements to to do the work of the people. And I, I, I just hope that's not lost on that, on you right now. Um, and uh, obviously, you're hearing it from the planning commission for from us. I I hope that continues to. Sink in and say, hey, we need to get up with the times, um, such staff wise. Uh, Kirian, do you have something as well?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I was just really wanted to um. Say that the emphasis on increasing the the housing stock to accommodate all the people coming in and, and really. Meet the needs of the, of the people, but also. Uh, hearing that, you know, the more housing we have, that we're also lowering that, that cost to. Um, from the other housing, you know, the supply and demand argument, that I think it's really important that we do. Continue to, you know, explore how we're creating those uh, economic opportunities through, through housing that's truly affordable in the city, and. I really appreciate that that's something that is really high on your level of concern as a city council. So. Thank you for continuing to look for those efforts for those opportunities.
Appreciate it. And you know, it it's for sure an ongoing uh, concern for this council. I know the planning commission, anyone. We, we need more affordable housing a- and our, in in our city, and and. It has to be a priority, you know, and I know that, that, you know, we were really looking at um, opportunities to pr- provide more. Um, permanent supportive housing, and that is definitely a need in our community. But let's not forget the need for just regular affordable housing as well and strategies around that. Um, though we're in a, still in this house, huge housing crisis, we're not even close to getting out of it. And so, um, you know, thank you, planning commission, to continue to look at those things. And I think it has to remain a priority of this city on on finding strategies. To, to meet our, our, our goals when it comes to housing. It has to be at the top of the list, because. You can't afford to live here, none of housing live here, everything else suffers. So it's gotta remain a priority of this. Of our, of our city that we continue to look at those strategies. So I appreciate that.
Yep, I see Eddie up there.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor Ryder and uh, uh, council for uh, for having us tonight. Um, I want to touch really briefly on three things, uh, two of which have already been touched on. First, uh, Rick and his team. Never, ever are they even the slightest bit unprepared for any planning commission meeting. We show up. And everything goes like clockwork. All of our documentation is, is perfectly clear. The amount of work they put into even. Uh, you know, what seems like the most routine planning commission meeting is just amazing. And so, thank you to them. We, we wouldn't be able to do this job if, if. You know, if we didn't have the support from, from Rick and his team. So thank you, guys. Um, also, I want to touch on what uh, what Kirian was just talking about, and that is just to not lose focus on the uh, housing component of this community. Um, there are so many vulnerable people right now, and we put a lot of effort into, uh, you know. Putting ideas and vetting ideas and bringing those to the council, but it's, it's obviously up to you to uh, to do what needs to be done and take the hard decisions to. Um, to make this community what it can be and and take care of those vulnerable people. And finally, I want to uh, remind the um, the council that in doing all of this. I I would also love to see a community that's more walkable and ridable. Um, and the neighborhoods are are connected, so that people do not have to get in their car every time they want to go somewhere. Um, I think we've spent, you know, decades uh, building up for um, automobiles, and it's time for us to. Uh, build a community where we can go about our daily lives and not have to get in a vehicle every single time we want to do anything. So as we uh, continue to grow the city, um, always keep that in mind. How can we make it more walkable? How can we make it more ridable? How can we uh, make it more accessible to people who don't need a vehicle? Thank you.
Thank you for that. I would absolutely agree with every, your assessment. I know, we all want to live in a city where we can walk to our services, right? We can go get our groceries, or you can go get. Everything we need, and we don't have to get in a car to do it. You know, that's the ideal circumstance. I think for a long time, we've just, we expanded so much as a city, we just sprawled it happened. Now it's like catch up time on getting services around where people live, and we just can't lose track of that. And it's, it's, it's the livability of your city, the walkability of your city is really important. I think it will remain a priority for this council. And for the planning commission. Um, is there anything else from the planning commission? Carolyn, you, I, you have your hand up?
Well, if, if no other commissioners want to speak, I just, I want to express my profound thanks to the planning commission. I know personally, ha- from having done that job for four years, um, how hard you work, but this past year. I mean, you all took on such huge topics and projects. And so, thank you, thank you for that. And thank you to Rick and his team for supporting that effort. And I would just like to add my voice, Scott. I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but. Of encouragement to, you know, let's look at reserves or whatever we need to do to get our planning and development team the help that they need. I really worry citywide about staff burnout and. Growing our, you know, getting our staff right sized to the growths that we are experiencing.
Oh, and I do appreciate council's comments about support for staff, and maybe just from some perspective, and we have a payroll just for general fund of over twenty-four million. And so if you did a modest cost of living just by two percent, you're almost up to a half million dollars of new revenue for next year. And that's not with adding any individuals. So I'm just trying to be mindful of, again, can we stay within our. And that's not with adding any individuals. So I'm just trying to be mindful of, again, can we stay within our current revenue structure? You're correct. We do have one-time revenues that we could dip into. But again, that's a balancing act too, that we will make sure that we're providing services to the public and then not having to receive those services if we get too far ahead of those. But great conversation. Again, appreciate the, the support for both council and planning commission.
Thank you. I think you, you understand where we're coming from. And we, we understand the conservative approach you've taken all this, this whole time. We appreciate it. I know the community appreciates it. I just feel like we're, we're pushing that level where we're, everyone's burnt out, you know. And we're burnt out because of COVID. We're burnt out for a whole host of reasons. We shouldn't be burnt out because we're doing twice the amount of job that someone's got to do, right? Because we don't have the staff to do it. So I know it's, I know it's a balancing act, but, you know, this council's always been very supportive of your requests when we need to, to uprightsize our, our staff. And so I just, I think it's a good reminder here, not only from this council, but the planning commission recognizing how important that is for us to provide the services that our community expects. So it's a good conversation. I appreciate everyone's support here, and I appreciate the planning commission. You know, it doesn't go unnoticed that the majority of our current council has come from our planning commission. So thank you. You guys are super important on what we do as a community, quality of life that we have. And Lacey is directly related to the work you guys do. And we, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we, we certainly appreciate it. Okay, one last thing, quick thing before we close. Scott, talk about where we at?
Yeah, so just, you may recall, we had a discussion in December about do we go back in person or go to, I'm sorry, a hybrid format or stay in a virtual format for future city council meetings. I guess I would strongly recommend, given the fact that we've had the highest weekly COVID nineteen case positives in the history since the, you know, two-year anniversary of the pandemic, this last week we had close to thirty nine hundred. The previous peak, if you don't count the previous two weeks, was more like in the range of seven hundred and fifty. And so again, COVID at this point in the environment is probably its most prevalent. And so I would probably give this another, again, thirty days. So in this case, your last meeting of February, we can have this discussion again.
I, you know, I would agree. I, I really do think we're gonna, you know, by the, in the February, we're gonna see this go down. I mean, at this point, I think everyone here knows like ten people recently who's, who've gotten COVID. It's just been crazy what it's gone through. But I think the, the result is at the end of, you know, a three, three-week, four-week period here, is that the numbers are gonna have to drastically drop. And why this is important is because obviously the planning commission's not gonna do a hybrid forum until the city council does a hybrid forum. And so we want to get there as soon as we can, but you're right. Let's, let's address this again in the February, and let's hope for first of March, things are in the right direction, where we can get into the hybrid system. Does that seem like a thumbs up for most people? Let's talk about that and okay. I know it's tough. I know it's tough, but I agree. Let's, let's have a conversation, you know, three, three weeks from now. And hopefully we'll get back and, back into this hybrid forum by, by March, early March. Okay. Got it. Anyone?
That's where Stipman has our question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Are we at the end of the agenda, right?
Yep.
All right, I, I just wanted to bring up today, it's an important day, Holocaust Remembrance Day. It's horrible thing to have to remember, but, you know, that's why we record history so it doesn't repeat itself. But hate anywhere, any shape, any shape or form should not be tolerated. And, you know, we all really need to be united on that front. So I just wanted to recognize and bring awareness to it that we all have more in common than we do different differences. So in that, we need to just be better than one another. So that's it.
Amen.
Thank you for that. There's, we can never say that enough, right? Like we are all in this together, a hundred percent. We're all in this. We all are trying to do the same, like what's best for our community. That's why I appreciate the planning commission so much and everything you do, all the work you do. You know, I always, you know, being on, on, on city councils, a thankless job. Being on planning commission is really a thankless job. So we understand that. And so thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mike, for, for bringing that up. You're right, there's no place for hate in, in our, in our community at all. And I am proud of the work that Lacey is doing with that as well. And it's, it's work that needs to continue. And there's days like the day that we have to remember because hate has been prevalent, you know, in our society for way too long. Thank you for that.
I mean, you know, we, we have a lot of good examples here too, so we should celebrate that as well. So.
Absolutely. We've, we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you, planning commission. Thank you, city council. Let's keep up the good work and make, you know, do you have Lacey be the place we're all proud of? So without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned.